Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for December 4th to order. We have a report to recall, we're all.
Counselor Kizer.
President.
Counselor Anderson.
Also.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor McCoyd.
Here.
Counselor Osick.
Here.
Counselor Hoy. Absent. Counselor Cook. Here. Counselor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Bennett.
Here. Please draw me in and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of additions to the agenda.
Second by Nanki. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselor.
I move that we allow public comment on item 5A by Rabbi Pearlstein immediately.
Second. Second by Nanki. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Rabbi Pearlstein. Yes.
Well, thank you very much. I'm going to make it short. I greatly appreciate the change in the agenda. I'm on my way with my seven children and wife to New York, so we've got to go catch a flight.
What can we do?
But I could have had a representative here, but I wanted to come here.
But you don't have an excuse, right?
No. I wanted to come here myself to talk again about the menorah that we put up last year and that we're trying to put up this year. The plan is to go ahead and be up a week from, actually, this coming Sunday and be up for about two weeks during the holiday of Hanukkah. Last year, we spoke about it as a partnership with the city, and it very much is. It's an opportunity for us to be able to share, of course, the universal message of Hanukkah, not just the Jewish message, universal of freedom, triumph, freedom of religion, freedom of expression, freedom for all people to be able to express the way that they want to live, which is very much fits with the ideals of our country and, of course, our wonderful city of Salem. Last year, the one thing we requested was that there is a daily use fee for putting a display up on city property. We asked for that to be waived, as we're a small organization, and this is something that if we partner with the city, we'll supply the entertainment once one day of Hanukkah, we'll supply the menorah, we'll supply everything else. If the city can do us that favor, and waiving the daily fee is really what we're requesting. And again, with the little short time that I have, I didn't want a representative here because it means so much to us, and we really, as an organization, as a community, see this as a partnership with the city, and we wanted to make that clear. All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We'll be making a motion later in the meeting on this, so.
Mr. Mayor, can we just change the order of the agenda?
We sure could.
And we can just dispatch that?
Okay. One second here.
Do you make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move item 5A.
Okay. All those, second.
Second.
Second by Anderson. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. I move that council waive the $2,010, $134 a day for 15 days.
Second.
Special use fee for the proposed menorah display. I'm just still stunned by the amount of money involved here. Proposed menorah display on the Civic Center open space located on the southeast corner of Commercial Street Southeast and Trade Street Southeast.
I second the second half of that motion, too.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Have a wonderful trip.
Thank you very much.
Happy Hanukkah. Thank you, Counselor McCoyd and Counsel. I have a couple of proclamations for this evening. First, I would like to do a proclamation on Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day and invite up Army Sergeant Mel Christie and representatives from VFW Marion Post 661, Carrie Wyman-Talik, Martha Garcia, Greg Terhune, and Jesus Montes. All of you who are here. Whichever is comfortable for you. Okay, great. Gentlemen, whereas December 7th, 1941 marks a somber day in United States history, and whereas we remember the more than 2,400 Americans who lost their lives on that day, including 1,102 sailors permanently entombed in the USS Arizona, and whereas in a speech the following day to a joint session of Congress, President Franklin Delano Roosevelt declared December 7th, 1941 as a date that will live in infamy, and whereas the events of that tragic day on the island of Oahu at Pearl Harbor propelled America into World War II and gave the nation a resolve that sustained the nation to victory, and whereas because of that victory for democracy and the sacrifices and suffering endured to secure it, the United States has come to know our enemies of then as allies today. Therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim December 7th, 2017 as Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day and encourage the community to reflect on the historic events that occurred 76 years ago and pay tribute to those whose lives were lost dated this fourth day of December 2017. Gentlemen, here is the proclamation.
Well, it's a great honor for me to be here tonight representing a World War II veterans. We're a thinning number now. I was remarking earlier to one of the council members that most of my buddies now have to be in their 90s or late 90s because I'm one of the younger ones, and I'm 93 years old. Now, I served with the 10th Mountain Division in Italy as a rifleman in two major campaigns, the North Apennine Campaign and the Poe Valley Campaign, and I've been honored since then to take an honor flight to Washington DC and see our very fine memorial, and I thank you for allowing me to be here tonight.
We thank you for being here. Thank you for your service so much. Chief Mike Niblock, come on down.
I've heard of you.
This is our fire chief here in Salem. Oh, got the whole crew. Geez. Well, better. Hell, geez. Chief, here you go. Whereas on December 4th, 1857, a group of dedicated volunteers established Alert Hook and Ladder as Salem's first fire company, whereas the occasion of the department's 160th anniversary provides the opportunity for people to commemorate all Salem firefighters, past and present, for dedicated service to the community, and whereas Salem firefighters play an essential role in protecting people and property every day, and whereas with dedication and commitment, Salem firefighters keep us safe as we go about our lives, including ice skating, I've discovered. And now, therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim December 4th, 2017 Salem Fire Department's 160th anniversary and ask people to honor the contributions of these dedicated men and women who, over the past 160 years, have played an instrumental role in safeguarding our community dated this fourth day of December Congratulations.
Well, Mayor, it's truly an honor to serve as fire chief for this great city and work with all these great people up here, and the credit really goes to them. And I want to present you and each of the counselors a commemorative 160th challenge coin as a memento of this occasion. It's not often that you reach the 160-year mark, and I don't feel 160, but it really is a privilege to serve the community, and I know that these gentlemen here do that each and every day, and the young ladies that we have working for us, and the relationships that we have with the community, we really relish those, and we appreciate the support. Thank you.
Absolutely. I guess they're good. Okay. They're very quiet. They really are. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You, too. Well, that's great. Have you all looked at these coins? These are really beautiful. Okay. And finally. Go ahead and move that one here. Whereas a special election was held on the 7th day of November 2017, at which time ballot measure 24-423 was voted upon, and whereas the results of the election have been recorded in the minute record of the council, and now, therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, Oregon, proclaim and declare that at said election, the following ballot measure was approved by the voters and is adopted. Ballot measure 24-423, City of Salem Library Improvements General Obligation Bond Authorization signed in Salem, Oregon, this fourth day of December 2017. Yay. Now, council and manager comments. Any comments? I got a couple. Just so you know what the mayor does in his off-hours. I had a couple of tree lightings at Riverfront Park, the city tree lighting on Friday. We had Santa. The Grant Community School Grizzlies Chorus sang for us. Counselors McCoyd, Hoy, and City Manager Steve Powers were there as well, and I really want to compliment the Parks Department for again putting on a really stellar event. There were hundreds of people there for the lighting of the community tree, and also the fire department who successfully delivered Santa for the lighting. Also had an opportunity to go to a tree lighting for the star trees celebrating the 175th anniversary of Willamette University. They had a great dinner. The lighting was really nice, except for the screaming rain, and there was a concert of holiday music. And then on Saturday, I had the chance to open the first annual Hunger Slam out at the Scottish Rite Temple, a 26-hour pro wrestling marathon, and it was put on by the West Coast Wrestling Connection, and it benefited the Marion Polk Food Share. The highlight of the time I was there was all the wrestlers were wrestling, I guess, in the ring, and in-walked Santa and body slammed the whole bunch. It was really awesome. So there will be a second annual, and I expect everyone to show up in tights. How's that sound? Ready to go. Or not.
He's got to pat his head.
Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to address that I will be making a motion after our hearing tonight to direct staff to protect the Croissant Creek Trail. I wanted to make that motion before any hearing to make sure that it's understood that I'll be making a motion for staff to protect the access to Croissant Creek Trail and improve bicycle and pedestrian safety in the area.
And we will call on you at that time. Thank you. Anyone else? All righty. The consent calendar, Counselor. Whoops. I left one there. I've got a fairly substantial group of folks who have signed up under public comment. I think you meant to sign up for the public hearing on the Dogwood. Is that correct, all of you who signed up on that issue? Okay. We'll be calling you in just a minute, but it's under a public hearing. Okay? And then Ryan Carlin. Didn't get to. Okay, Ryan. Hey, did anyone else want to address the council under public comment? We can just have them come up and.
For the public hearing.
Oh, the public hearing. Okay. Okay. All righty. Now the consent calendar, Counselor. Well, it sure isn't. Okay, we'll go to public hearings. We'll open the first public hearing.
The City Council will conduct a public hearing concerning a review of the Planning Administrator's Decision Approving the Consolidated Phase Tentative Subdivision Plan in Class 2 Zoning Adjustment Case Number SUBADJ17-09 for property located at the 3,700 and 3,800 blocks of Dogwood Drive South. The criteria applicable to the decision are Salem Revised Code 205.010D, 205.015D, and Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. A failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue shall preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Testimony will be allowed as follows: the applicant, limited to 10 minutes; the appellant, if applicable, limited to 10 minutes, applicable; neighborhood association, limited to five minutes; and other interested parties, limited to three minutes.
Excellent. All right. We will begin with the staff report.
Thank you. For the record, Christopher Green, planner with the Community Development Department, Planning Division, case manager for the review of the consolidated Dogwood Heights Phase Subdivision and Class 2 Adjustment Case. I ask that the presentation, the staff report attachments, and additions be entered into the record. So the proposal under review is a consolidated application, a tentative phase subdivision plan for a 46-lot subdivision in four phases, and then that is consolidated with two Class 2 adjustments. One would increase the street grade allowed on local streets in the subdivision from 12% to 15%, and the length of a flag lot accessway within the subdivision from 400 to 500 feet. So the property is located in southwest Salem. It is near Madrona and Croissant Scenic Road South. Also, the Belcrest Memorial Park is just to the south of this property, and Croissant Scenic Way is a designated minor arterial that runs north-south and, right now, dead ends at the north boundary of the subject property. An aerial view shows some of the smaller streets, the local streets that are in the vicinity, so Spring Street dead ends at the south boundary of the property, Baum Street also at the south boundary, near the southwest corner, and then Dogwood Drive South, the namesake for the proposal, currently dead ends at the east boundary. The property itself, it consists of 10 lots, about 14 acres total. The part to the north is generally somewhat sloping, and the topography is steeper on the portion to the south on the two large lots here at the south boundary by the cemetery. So the proposal for a phased subdivision, again, it's four phases. There's an area of three tax lots that are near the center of the proposed subdivision. That area is shown in gray there. It's not a part of the proposal, but is abutting the proposal on several sides. And then Croissant Scenic Way South, the minor arterial, dead ends at this property, as do several local streets, so Spring Street, Baum Street, and Dogwood. In the area immediately around the property, there have been residential developments, mostly in the 1950s and 1960s, and those have largely just remained there, and the subject property has been a, part of it's been a Christmas tree farm and otherwise wooded vacant area. So Phase 1 is 20 lots at the north boundary of the subject property, and near the northwest corner, there is an area for stormwater detention as well. Phase 2 is 11 lots just to the south of that. Phase 3 is four lots along Dogwood Drive, and then Phase 4, in the area of steeper topography, is 11 lots, and those range in size in that area from just under 13,000 square feet to nearly 35,000 square feet, so larger lots in that area to the south. And then that area is served by a local street that terminates in a cul-de-sac, and then the flag lot accessway that I mentioned that the adjustment is being requested for runs east to west across there. So Dogwood Drive itself, currently, this orange area shown here is the developed extent of Dogwood Drive that basically dead ends at the subject property. There's a driveway serving the not-apart area here, a house on that. However, there's a right-of-way that extends through most of the subject property all the way to Spring Street. The last portion, the westernmost portion of that, is about 20% in grade. The applicant's proposing to not construct that portion and instead vacate the area, basically outlined in red there, to vacate that portion of the right-of-way rather than construct the street all the way through to Spring Street. That would take place through a separate process at City Council, but it is required by recommended condition 1 in the staff report that the applicant vacate that before Phase 2. The adjustment mentioned increasing the grade, so generally 12% is the maximum allowed grade on local streets in our street standards. The areas highlighted in red there would have a 15% grade. Prior to the Planning Administrator's Decision that was issued in October, the applicant submitted a revised plan to limit these areas of over 15% grade to no more than 200 feet in length for each segment or less, and that was in response to concerns about fire and traffic safety related to that standard. The other areas, there are the areas at intersections would be 5%, and then most of the street through Phase 4 would be within the 12% standard that's in the street standards. And also, your staff report shows a modification proposed to Condition 9. This is to clarify, so Croissant Scenic Way comes through the property north to south, and there's a condition requiring that to be constructed as a minor arterial through the subject property. The applicant's also proposing Baum Street to run basically to the southwest corner here in this area in red. The existing pavement on Baum Street doesn't quite run all the way to the boundary of the subject property. It stops about 20 to 30 feet short. This condition clarifies that that is meant to be a street connection and that it would be required to pave a connection that would taper to the existing pavement, so there's actually a through street there. So several issues were raised during public comments, during the Planning Administrator's review and this phase of the review. Most of those are summarized and addressed on pages 11 through 18 of the staff report. I'll mention a few very briefly at this point. A number of concerns were raised related to existing problems in the area with stormwater and groundwater drainage. These have caused quite an impact over the years on residences that were developed in the 1950s and 60s in the adjacent properties. This proposal is subject to the 2014 stormwater regulations, which were adopted a few years back, a much more rigorous approach to stormwater management than would have been in place at the time the areas around this were developed. It requires that stormwater generated by this proposal be treated and controlled on site and prohibits basically that some of the concerns that were mentioned about this development making the existing problem worse on properties around it. There were comments that mentioned concern about the topography and some concerns about geological hazards in the area. There's basically three, there's different stages at which this geological issues are reviewed. At this stage, we're at the tentative subdivision plan, so this is probably the least detailed phase of that review. At this stage, the landslide hazard ordinance requires a geological assessment for properties with slopes like this. That assessment mostly identifies conditions on the site, mitigation that's recommended, and potential precautions to take. Condition 15 that was recommended by staff requires further in the process a lot-by-lot analysis, basically a follow-up analysis that's more detailed, and that's consistent with what you would see. There's a letter from Redmond Geo-Technical Engineers in your additions packet. It's consistent with the follow-up assessment that's recommended in that letter. And then at the stage of construction of both public improvements and houses, there's additional review, both through the city's grading and clearing and grading ordinance being reviewed, review of engineered designs for streets, and then from the geological assessment and some of the earlier research, proposed mitigation measures and building code measures to apply to the construction of houses. So staff's recommendation is to approve the consolidated case subject to the conditions in the Planning Administrator's Order as modified in the staff report, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, and we'll have questions after the public's had an opportunity to speak. We'll begin with the applicant, who will have 10 minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Mark Grins. I'm with Multitech Engineering. Our office is at 1155 13th Street Southeast in Salem, and we're the projects working for the applicant in both the land planning and the engineering for this proposed development. This is a piece of property or the combination of properties here that we have looked at for a few different developers with different ideas with. at for a few different developers with different ideas with the, with our current client, Mr. Timbercraft Construction here, who has settled on, on what he is trying to achieve with this piece of property. Throughout that process of approximately eighteen months that we've been reviewing this, we brought in Redmond Geotechnical Services, and he brought in, as a consultant to him, a geological consultant so that we were able to address the city's criteria for geotechnical and geologic assessments for the site. And that, the original, and the original assessment was that, that there, that there weren't any significant risks or hazards that, that would affect the development of the property. We, we had him reaffirm that report and make sure that it was current with this, with everybody. And then because we had modified the, throughout, since he was involved, we had modified our proposal for the Phase Four area. We asked him to, here recently, to issue an opinion letter relative to the, to our proposed plan, and he viewed, he viewed the plan that you see here along with a significant amount of grading that we have put together that's also part of your package. But we did a detailed grading plan in order to establish street grades and what we'd have to do in order to build it, and he's looked at that. And did, did as Chris represented, recommend that, that as we move forward in this process in the different stages, that there be more, some more detailed analysis completed up there as we generate more detailed construction drawings as we move forward. We did work, like Chris outlined, we did work extensively with staff and including the fire department in order to try to come up with the, with the best configuration for, and street pattern out here in order to service the site. There, there weren't any alternatives that Public Works was able to provide that were, that were any more effective or more efficient than what we had put together here. Fire, the fire department had a concern with regard to the, to the street grades that we had proposed initially in there, and we made some slight modifications and then did a drawing that better described for them where those steeper sections of roadway would have to be. And there's three in there that have to exceed the twelve percent in there. And, and all of those, we were able to keep the, the length of those runs down to less than two hundred feet. And we have an overall average slope from where we start off at Croizen Scenic Way and end up at the cul-de-sac there in Phase Four that's less than twelve percent for an overall average, which was what the fire department had asked us to achieve. And so we've been able to, to do that. We've, we've taken into account the, the issues relative to stormwater and, and surface runoff that would be generated from this site. And in, and in fact, with, with full development of this project, because we have it set out, a significant amount of surface water that today finds its way down to the Croizen Scenic area from this upper area will be picked up in the drainage systems that will be constructed and, and taken, and treated and taken through our stormwater management plan, detained, and then outletted to the city's system in a manner that's, that's, should reduce the amount of water that the downstream properties are seeing in the immediate area and should, by adhering to the city's design standards, shouldn't increase any of the current problems that exist in Croizen Creek that's there. We, we did, we did, as this, as you'll see in some of the comments, we did make some adjustments in the proposal for the elevation where we, where, where we cross Dogwood in order to raise that up. If you were to try to build a street and from the terminus of Dogwood today and intersect down at Croizen Scenic Way on the grade that we have available, we'd have to construct a street that's in excess of fifteen percent in, in there. And some stretches of it would likely have to be steeper than that in order to, to make that work. So we didn't feel that was, that was the best approach, so we started figuring out how to grade the street, get it up, start bringing it up when we left Croizen Scenic Way in Phase One. And as we turned to the south and headed into Phase Two, continued to, to raise that street up and allows us to place some, fill in the Dogwood area and then achieve a, an a grade from Dogwood back up to the east to its terminus that's, that's less than twelve percent now in there. So we've been able to make that better in that it does, it does necessitate that in order to make that work well, that we vacate that stretch of Dogwood that sits there between where we're, where we're proposing to terminate it today and Croizen Scenic Way. But we think that, that's a, that's a, a good decision. It overall makes, makes that existing Dogwood and its connection to the west and to Croizen Scenic Way a much better street than it would have been otherwise. We've, we worked with staff in, in order to make sure that, that we had, had addressed the concerns or at least knew how do we were going to have to address the concerns that they had for utilities in there. And as you see in one of the conditions is that we're going to have to find a way to get water into the Phase Four area. There, there isn't water at the correct pressure level there today, and so that is one of, that is one of the conditions. That's one of the things that we'll, that we'll have to deal with to, and work with staff and come up with a route in order to get that water in there. But we knew that going in, that that was, that that was an issue that we were going to have to, to address, and, and we will continue to work with staff to get that, that water service up into that area. We don't have any objections to the conditions that staff has put forward. We, in the original decision, there wasn't a condition about connecting Baum to the, to the end there and recognize that along with fire, staff and fire have, have some concern about the ability of emergency services in order to exit that area without a turnaround. And so we understand that. That could be, could be achieved by a gravel approach instead of paved, but we don't have any, any big objections to, to paving it and, and across there to make that connection between where we're going to terminate and where the existing blacktop, blacktop surface is there today. I believe at, at this point I'll stop, and if you have any questions, me, I'd be happy to answer them. I know that there's going to be some things that we're probably going to have to address after some of the neighbors speak.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you. Were you, could you please point out more clearly on the map where you're describing that connection to Bassam that you were stating about being gravel or?
Right. So right here, so there's, there's the existing paved portion ends right there where the, where the pointer is, and R Street ends there, and so staff is, is requesting that we, that we complete the paved and make that connection so there's a way for emergency vehicles to get out of there?
So at that point, those lots that are in kind of a dash line, though I know they're not in your project, they're not developed, they're just?
They, they, they all, they all have, they all have homes on them today.
Have holds on them?
Yeah.
Homes on them?
Yeah.
So describe for me, if you could, how Croizen Scenic works through there exactly. I'm not sure I understand.
Today Croizen Scenic terminates there. As it's coming from, as it's coming south, it terminates, it terminates at, terminates as it enters our property. And then when you get to the other side of our property, there's some paved partial improvements. As you work your way this way, it's, it's not improved to full street standards in that area. And it works its way back down to this point. And then again, it's not a fully improved street system that works its way back down where it goes past Baum.
But there's houses in there.
There's, there is houses in there.
Well, how are they served right now?
They, they, they're served by whatever type of?
Whatever's there?
Street improvement is there. So we, our project will, will connect, we have the, of course, we, since Croizen Scenic Way is a collector or arterial, we'll be collecting, we'll be connecting there, so we'll have, all of our lots will have access coming down here, take Croizen Scenic Way over to Madrona and either drop down to Croizen Creek or, or can go on up across to Liberty or back up Dogwood and work their way across to Madrona and up to Liberty. So we have those abilities.
So all of your streets that are inside of your area are paved and sidewalked?
Yep.
They are?
And now, so they will connect to the curbed street improvement that's here at the end of Dogwood, will connect to the curbed and sidewalk improvement that's here at the end of Croizen Scenic Way.
Okay.
So, and then we'll be making paved improvement here. We'll be making some additional improvements to this section of Croizen Scenic Way as we, when we do Phase Two in order to meet the city's design standards for the street that's in front of these, these lots that we're creating here.
The other is, and I, let's see if I can see the name of it. Well, the one that kind of is a fish hook that comes down through?
This one here?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
What is that?
That's, this is Phase Four, so this is, this is a, this is a street that's running uphill. Now, this is, this, the topography is going?
What's the name of that street? What's that called?
Hill, like, I'm sorry.
Hillside?
Hillside. I can't remember what we called it.
Appropriately.
Hillside, so it's hillside goes up, so we're coming off of this intersection, we're coming up at about twelve percent, then we're going into a stretch of fifteen percent and then back to twelve or a little bit flatter as we work our way back up and then end up at the cul-de-sac. And the topography is going uphill this way.
The cul-de-sac though, and this is something I was, I was a little confused by, by the transportation. So at the end of the cul-de-sac, is that a?
That's, this is, this is like a flag lot driveway access to service?
All those?
There's, there's four, there's four lots right here?
Okay.
That are not connected to the cul-de-sac, and that they would take their access off of, off of the?
And what's the width on that?
That would, that, that would be a minimum of twenty feet in width in order to meet the fire department requirements. It has a, has a turnaround in here that would meet the, the fire department's requirements.
So it runs through those folks' lots is how that works? Is that?
Yes, so it, it's, this lot, thirty-nine, for instance, this lot here would have ownership on both sides. Thirty-eight would have ownership on both sides. Thirty-seven would have ownership on both sides.
Okay.
It, it's, it's all based on, it's all based on the topography?
Yeah.
And, and what it, what it takes to get the road up there and what it takes to, to get access through there. And then also, we took into account where, what elevation we would want this to be at in order to be able to get driveway and get home and access off on the downhill side.
Okay, okay. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Grins. I was a little confused by what you were talking about when you're talking about, oh, fill on Dogwood and everything else, and, and maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but it sounds to me like the street is going to be higher than the lots.
Well, the, the street, the street is going to be, so let's start with this particular park, property that's not a park, has a home on, and it's elevated, so it sits above, it sits well above Dogwood.
Well, what about your lots, you know?
So as we, so as we develop and bring our grade up the hill here, we'll be bringing, we'll be moving dirt and we'll be filling these lots in order to bring them up along with the road.
So you're buil, building the road up and you're also bringing the lots up?
That's correct.
Are you bringing all the lots up or will the lots be sloped down from the road?
The, 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 these lots on the downhill side of our, of our extension of hillside will, will be elevated. These lots down here will not, so there'll be, there'll be a differential between the back of these lots and the back of these lots.
So no one in any of those lots is going to have to go up in their driveway, on their driveway in order to get to the street?
I, I don't know that, that I could say that there wouldn't be, that, that the driveways wouldn't slope down from the roadway into the garage. It depends, it depends on the home construction.
If I may continue, Mr. Mayor. So we just got the report from Redmond Engineering just as we walked into the room, so I haven't a chance, had a chance to peruse it, but I've scanned it. And I've got some questions about it on conclusions and recommendations on page number two of that report.
Okay.
The first thing, I'm looking at the first paragraph, and Mr. Redmond points out that the field exploration work performed during our previous geotechnical investigation, which is, I presume, is the one they're relying on now, did not extend much beyond and/or to the south of Dogwood Drive South. So the way I read that is there's really been no field work done on what you would call parcel number four, or phase number four.
We, I, I, he did not come up into this area and, and dig any test holes?
Okay, so that's a yes, there wasn't any work done there.
However, the, the, the geologic assessment that was done by, by the, the engineering geologist that he had, did an assessment of the entire property relative to its stability. That's why Mr. Redmond is recommending that there be some additional evaluations done up in this upper area as we move to the next step.
Okay, and is, I believe from what I did read, on Dogwood Road there, it's three hundred twenty-five feet in altitude, and at the bottom, the most south part of Phase Four, it's four hundred and fifty, so we have a hundred and twenty-five foot rise from Dogwood to the back of the property?
That, that's approximately correct, yes.
And that's like twelve stories?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Then they also talk about site grading associated with the planned construction of Hillside Lane South, which is the, the fish hook?
That's correct.
Will result in near vertical cuts in the construction of a possible forty feet high retaining wall. Where are those cuts going to be and where's the forty-foot-high retaining wall going to be?
Well, the, the, the conceptual grading plan that we put together for this, I'm not sure where in his assessment there's, there is a forty-foot-high retaining wall. We, we do know that there will have to be some, some retaining wall construction that takes place along this, this portion right here as we come through.
So that's a lot beneath your arrow though, isn't it? So that lot is going to have vertical cut or maybe a forty-foot retaining wall?
There is a, there is a lot right here, yes.
Okay.
And that lot will be able to get access on, off of the street in approximately this location to get on.
You mean down through the forty-foot retaining wall or through the vertical cut?
That, it's hard to, it's hard to describe where the retaining walls would go because that's not, that's not how I, how I've evaluated it so far. I provided him street grades, I provided him?
Sure, you did the, the engineering study and it's up to him?
And said, specifically wanted him to say, is it feasible?
Okay.
And he says it is.
With?
And, and he says there would have to be more evaluation, and I agree with him that there would have to be more evaluation. The, the likelihood up in this area that we will be into some very hard material, if not solid rock, in pieces, places up here depending upon how we finally set the final grades in here. But that's not an uncommon approach for?
Sure.
Hill sites, because if I were going to rely on his judgment based on a couple test pit excavations up here, that wouldn't be what I'd want as an engineer designing the streets.
Sure, you'd want something more solid.
Anyway, I'd want him to come back up here once we know, once we get through this process, we know what we've, what approval we have. Now we can go back in and spend more energy, get more detail than what's, what's this street going to really be, and have him come up in here and do some additional testing and give us better information to work from.
Thank you very much. I have two more questions, and they relate to lot number four. The first one is, as I understand it now, if you're looking at Hillside Drive from the cul-de-sac in one where Hillside Drive drops off, from that point, yes, right there, sir, from that point all the way to the cul-de-sac at the end of the fish hook, that is going to be either a twelve percent grade or a fifteen percent grade?
There, there is, there, that's not, no, so this, so this?
That's five.
We have five percent as we come off.
Okay.
We go, then we transition into a fifteen. We come out of fifteen?
To five for the roadway?
Back five through the intersection, we come across the intersection, we come back at twelve, then we go into, we go into street grades that are more than twelve. They may not all be fifteen?
Sure.
But more than twelve? -but more than 12 to transition our way up, and then we drop back into street grades that are, that are in the 12 percent or less as we make our way around here up to the top.
Then, it, it seems to me, as looking at this in the four phases, the real problems that are coming here from an engineering and a development point of view mostly relate to Phase Four.
That, that would be correct.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Counselor Cook?
Thank you. So, was it discussed with Phase Four and the problems therein of changing the lot size with Phase Three to incorporate for eliminating part of that phase? It would take care of your flag lot issue and also take care of the issues that were raised about lots 35 and 36 as far as trees and slope?
Well, that, that is, that is an option that we could look at. When we, if you, if you've had, had the, the full geotech report, you'll notice that in the previous evaluation by a different client, that this area was essentially larger lots that were cut off from there, and this wasn't done back here. However, in, in our work with the current client, he felt that there was, there were, there was some value in terms of trying to get up and take advantage of these upper tiers in here in terms of, of build, the ability to build up there and the ability to take advantage of, of what they offer in terms of views. And that's the reason that we set this up this way, was to be able to transition our way up there. Now, I'm, I'm not gonna try to mislead anybody, just, just as the previous discussion alluded to, this is our tougher area. This is the fourth phase. This is where we're gonna have to concentrate a lot of our additional evaluations in terms of geotechnical and construction costs as well as construction issues to deal with. So, there, there may be a situation where we come back and change our mind about what we're gonna do up here. But, given that Mr. Redmond says it's feasible to do, to build it, and that it, that the grading, the area of grading takes place in this area with some grading along the, the accessway in here, but that we can still get out onto this property and, and that we can safely construct homes up here, that's, that's what I asked him to evaluate for us, and that's, and that's what he said, so.
But you don't wanna extend the roadway?
Pardon?
You don't wanna extend the roadway?
Extend it?
Right, where you have it, the cul-de-sac, you don't wanna extend it.
This, extend the actual cul-de-sac this way?
Right, you wanna have, there's a reason you picked the flag lot as opposed to the cul-de-sac.
Well, it's, I can service four lots off of an accessway, so that's, the standards allow that. That's, that's, standards allow that, so since I could do that, and the utilities that are gonna service these lots such as drainage and sewer are gonna come from down here, there wasn't a need to have the same type of infrastructure for those four lots as I have on the rest of this to get up there?
So, it's more expensive for you to do the road, more expensive for him to do-
It's more, it's more improvement. It's more width. It brings with it a different, a different level of infrastructure that's in the roadway itself that, that are, is not as, is not necessary to create those, those four large lots. That, that, like I said, can be, the code allows them to be serviced off of an accessway, so that's, that was one of the reasons that led us to that direction, so.
Thank you.
Do you know what the timing is on Phase Four?
Oh, we, the, the, what we know is that we wanna build Phase One in 18-
Okay.
And then, likelihood is that we would build Phase Two in 19 and beyond that. It would depend on more than what I can see in my crystal ball in terms of what would be ahead out there.
What would be on Phase Four with the geotechnical issues at, at stake here and that sound like you're still kind of working your way through them and some of the other issues? Will, will you be back here on Phase Four with approval tonight, or will you go ahead? What happens?
No, so, this, I, this is, the way we're dealing with this is, is, this is not uncommon to, to, like I said, we, we, we develop what we, what we think is a feasible layout that a client wishes to do. We would then, when, when, when we know that we have geotechnical and geologic concerns that's gonna be out there, we bring our, bring our consultant in to evaluate it, and one, make, make sure it's feasible, like I said, and two, make sure that we're not, that we're not gonna be saddled with, with unreasonable costs to get there. Now, that's, Mr. Redmond said it's feasible, but he's also saying there's other things that he's gonna wanna do. The next le, so once, like I said, once we get it approved, so we know what we can do, then we would go to that next level. That, there's, that's not to say that there, that there won't be issues that, that may lead us a different direction before we're all said and done, but we, you can't spend $50,000 to figure out, to, to get a better, yeah, we think you can, and then, and then come here and ask for approval and not know what, what am I gonna get when I get done?
Yeah.
Might spend $50,000 and find out that there are other, there are other obstacles in my way to that. So, I'd rather, I'd rather approach it the way we typically do, which is we get, we get a subdivision approved, we outline, make sure that it's feasible to do it, and then turn, then come back in and deal with the issues, and then establish whether or not Phase Four, does it have some things that are gonna change our approach? That's, it's possible. I don't know enough up here yet.
Sure. As you get into Phase Four, who signs off on the final, is there, is there another, not council, but is there another city technical review of what's going on?
Yeah, so we, we, we will have, our, our, once we get through this stage, then as we can, continue to come forward, then we will develop detailed construction plans, and along with that will come a detailed, another detailed geotechnical report that talks about what we have to do in order to build, what we're proposing to do, what kind of constraints and recommendations that are placed on us for that. And then, as has been indicated by staff and, and Mr. Redmond, each one of these lots then will be looked at on an individual basis after the subdivision's built, in order to make sure that something different than anticipated has, doesn't show up at the time that the actual house construction's starting. Make sure that there, that there isn't some, something specific to the type of house that wants to go in there that, that has to be, that has to be addressed. I'm, I'm also a specially licensed geotechnical consultant, and so this is, this type of evaluation that gets done after the subdivisions get built is, again, is common particularly in projects that were built a few years ago before you had your landslide ordinance in place, and in those situations where there were specific recommendations that at the time of each home construction, they need to be viewed and they need to be evaluated to make sure that what the original recommendations were are still valid, or if there has to be modifications to those. So, this is, this is not an unusual process. It feels unusual because it's, it's usually not brought out to the extent that this one is, but-
Yeah.
But it is not unusual that we follow this process.
Well, will these be built, the developer that brought this to us tonight, will they be the builder as well, or will there be other contractors?
He, he is, he is a builder. It is likely that, that he would be the one that would, that would build a significant number of the homes in here, but he's, he's also a gentleman who will, will take advantage of what the marketplace puts out there, and we know that there are other people that have been interested in the development of this property. And so, my guess is that once he gets this going, that he'll be contacted by other builders who are also interested in building the area. But he is a builder, and he does specialize in building on sites that are topographically challenged, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Grins. And the neighborhood group. Anyone representing the neighborhood group tonight?
Neighborhood Association.
Neighborhood Association, sorry.
Oh, no, no, I'm Mr. Public Guy.
No, I need the Neighborhood Association if there is a representative to speak tonight, okay? All right, then I will call on Don Orwick. Come on down. And behind Don will be John Donovan. Is John Donovan here?
Yes.
Ah, there you are, okay.
Second here or-
Yes, uh-huh.
Either one, they both work.
And you'll have three minutes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so watch the lights. The yellow will turn on at one minute left, and when the red turns on, if you just stop talking, we'll ask you questions.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Well, Don Orwick, I live just off of the property that's being developed.
Could you come closer to the mic?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a, a few concerns. One is pedestrian access to Nelson Park, 'cause I'm not sure there's a safe way for children to get from this development to Nelson Park where there's a sidewalk. And, you know, with, I think neighborhood parks are part of the criteria for evaluating a development. And, and so that's one concern I had. Another one is, it's already noted in the report that it's, that the upper portion of, which I believe is Phase Four, is felt to be a moderate to high-risk slide, landslide area. And, just questions about whether this development would increase the risk of landslide in that area. I know there's still further geotechnical work that needs to be done, and I don't know that we know the answer to that question right now. And so, without knowing the answer to that question, makes me wonder if the Phase Four should be approved, or maybe put on, either not approve it or else just put on a contingent approval based on further study. I guess there is gonna be further study on that anyway. And then another concern was the steepness of the road up to Phase Four, how safe that is, living in that area right up against the hillside, when things get slippery and icy. I know that the ice and snow can stick around two or three days longer. Where I live, then it does just a block down the street where they get sun. And I suspect with the elevation there, this is gonna be a place that stays icy for a long time, and so there may be questions of the safety of that road and sliding, and kids, of course, are gonna be tempted to wanna play on that road, and so, concerns that way. And then the, one other question is, I think this is, says the developer is Dogwood Drive LLC. And I'm not sure how long Dogwood Drive LLC will be in existence after this is completed. As, I noticed that that was the developer rather than, rather than Timbercraft Homes, which has been a long-time business in town, but I don't know how long Dogwood Drive LLC will be in existence after the completion of this project.
Okay. Could you, would you mind, where is Nelson Park on there?
Up north.
Up, it's not on that map?
No, it's off-
It's right across Creighton Creek Road, just on the other side of Creighton Ri, Creek Road.
One tenth of miles to the west.
Okay. All righty. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John Donovan will be followed by Nancy Lacy.
So, I live right there, okay? And I've lived in there 25 years with my lovely wife, okay? So, walked this 25 years. So, there's a code in Chapter 803 Streets and Rightway Improvements that says that there has to be a traffic analysis when there's more than 200 expected daily trips. And Tony Martin was nice enough to tell me that his multiplier is 9.52, so that leads to over 400 daily trips out of this subdivision. 400 is grossly over 200, so I don't, do not understand. I, I'm humbly requesting a traffic analysis be done. It's nowhere near a rounding error. It's 400 trips versus 200, okay? Second thing is that city codes 205 dash 01 you have in the record say, state that "safe and convenient bicycle and pedestrian access from subdivision to adjacent residential areas, including parks must be included." The city code also states that a local street must be a minimum of 30 feet in diameter, okay? So, if we look, where am I going? This street here, you can see my photos, so this is not up for debate. This street here is 15 to 17 feet wide, okay? This feet here is seven, is 15 feet wide, and you can see that there is a fir tree that is six feet in diameter right here. So, we're gonna have cars come off a 10 to 12 percent grade, turn a corner without a street sign. We're gonna go from a nice 30-foot way down to 15 feet with a fir tree on the other side that's six, six feet in diameter. So, when you have your kids with a stroller telling them, "Go to the park," and somebody's gonna come down that hill at more than 25 miles an hour, that is not safe. And it does not meet code. Okay, all right. So, all I'm asking is that the city follow the code and get a traffic study, and that these streets with the money that this development will generate, so if you take 44 houses times $15,000 per house, that's $666,000, okay? You take a $400,000 house, and you have a property tax of $400,000 on that, in two years, you'll get $1.6 million. You'll have $2 million added to the city budget if this is developed, okay? You can afford to develop Baum and Spring. There is a discrepancy in the record, the response. It says that this will connect to limited sidewalks. There is not one foot of sidewalk from Spring to Roberta to Nelson Park, from Baum to Roberta to Nelson Park. I'm happy to meet anybody there any day, Saturday or Sunday, dawn to dusk. I'll provide the donuts. We can walk it, okay? So, I think the city should follow its code and get a traffic study and provide local access to what is recommended. And I'm happy, it's, again, it's not up for debate. I can show-
Thank you, yeah. Time's up. I wanna ask you a question, though, so maybe you'll get to answer some more. On that portion of the street, you indicated that's 17 feet with a fir tree.
So, this is Spring and this is Baum.
Baum. Those are existing and outside this application, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But I, I guess I'm saying is, is-
What happened when those went in? What, how come the-
Mr. Green?
Well, I'll ask you.
Okay, so, so they were, and they were annexed to the city, okay? And I understand that people say, "Well, you know, we can't do that now," but this project was only kind of put up this summer. So, again, the city is gonna get a million and a half to $2 million that wasn't in their long-term traffic budget. It was, it's kind of a gift, right? And so, we, you can use that in this neighborhood.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're gonna have people come down that road at 30 miles an hour, turn that corner, hit that fir tree, hit me, walking my dog.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Donovan, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan, thanks for coming down. And just to provide some context, you've alluded to people speeding, not following traffic conditions, and you've lived in that property for 25 years. Can you just briefly talk about some of the traffic concerns that have been raised? I know you mentioned specifically access to parks and lack of facilities.
So, I'm a, I'm a dog walker. Okay, so, to get to Nelson Park, there's two crossings over Creighton Creek. You can go north on Creighton Scenic for two short blocks, make a left. That section of Madrona has absolutely no sidewalks. From Elderberry West to Nelson Park has no sidewalks, and it has a culvert ditch that's four feet deep that's 18 inches away from the roadway.
Gotcha.
Okay, so Roberta comes around and comes down here and goes to Park. There is metal pipes. It's been on numerous photos that have been submitted. There's a metal pipe on one side, so you can't go anywhere, and there's a creek on the other side. And then again, so Roberta is not 12 percent. Roberta's about eight. So, people are gonna come around, go down there, you know, there's just no, there's not one foot of sidewalk.
How fast do cars usually travel?
So, the city commonly puts a radar gun on Madrona, and this is the same elevation as Madrona. So, people come down at 35. Again, and there's no sidewalk. So, the kids who are waiting for the school bus at Scenic, Madrona, wait on gravel at the edge of people going 35 miles an hour.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. And after Nancy is John Chester.
I'm Nancy Lacy, and I live at 3666 Camelia Drive South. I live on the hill that Section Four wants to be built on. In fact, if you look right to the right, there's a little pie shape to the right of the, the map. I live at the, the street dead ends into my property. I live on the hill. And I can tell you the problem. I've lived there for 44 years. I can tell you the problems. We, okay, we'll start with water pressure. I live at the end of the street, up the hill. The city has to guarantee me a certain amount of pressure at my meter, but in the- But in the summer, when everybody pulls on all that water in the lawns and showers and everything else, my water pressure goes down. And so you're going to have the same problem up on the hill. This whole Section 4 here, that looks, you can't really tell by the map here, but that is a hill. That is a big hill. I live on this hill. I can't tell you how many utilities have said they should never allowed you to build that house. I didn't build it, but they should never, the house should never have been built. I have water that comes down from, when it rains, and I don't mean heavy rain, I mean just two days of steady rain, will have water coming down from the cemetery. It goes underground, comes out the middle of the hill, comes down, and water cascades, waterfalls down the back of my property. And I have a ditch, and it runs down the ditch, the side of my house, and it goes into John Chester's, Dr. Chester's yard. Now, Dr. Chester, he's been there for a long time, too. And that water used to come down and just slime his driveway. He put a big concrete block thing in it with a drain at the bottom. But sometimes the water has a mind of its own, and it still goes where it wants to go. And one year we had really heavy rain, it didn't hit the pond thing, it went down under his house. So, and another thing I'd like to say is taking the trees off the land. You've got this hill. You start cutting into the hill, you're taking the trees down, you're taking the roots down. What's going to hold that hill there? You're telling me you're going to do this by each individual house? Well, once the house, once you've cut the trees down, which they've already cut the trees down on the other section there, I mean, that was before it even got approval, that was, the trees were cut. You're going to have this whole hillside with coming down, and all the people that are down below are going to suffer. And I think we always say, we always say, "Isn't it a shame that those houses came down, or the mudslide came down on those houses, or those houses were flooded out? But let's take care of it before we get that." And, is that me? Am I okay?
That's you, you're the one minute. You keep going, I'll tell you to stop.
So anyway, another thing, they're going to take care of the water on the other section, that's fine, except that they're going to have this clean water, they're going to put it into some kind of a container, and, but they're going to dump it into Creighton Creek. Creighton Creek, we have a lot of water floods. I've lived there for 44 years. Also, Dogwood.
That is the stop line. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Counsel McCoy.
See, the, how do you do that? See that little pie shape by where the compass is? I'm right there. And it's all hill.
Okay? Thank you. John Chester, followed by Pamela Prozice.
Thank you for allowing me to talk, and thank you, counsel and administrative staff for your public service, public services. Under-valued, but very important. I'm the son of Dr. John Chester and Hilda Chester, who live at 3628 Dogwood, and that is right here. This is the property. Their house is probably sits somewhere about here. My parents couldn't make it tonight, I'm here representing them. They've been living here. I grew up in the area almost 50 years. Seen the neighborhood change. This development is the most significant change in those 50 years that will impact the neighborhood and the, in the greater neighborhood area as well as pedestrian traffic, street traffic. I'm most concerned about Phase Four, and specifically Lot 36. I think that's 36 there. The, if you look at the, I handed out a handout, and on the back, last second page, is a USGS topographic map, which kind of highlights, the contours on this map don't really show you the dramatic slope that, Mrs. Lacy was mentioning. This is a very steep slope. And people have been talking about geotech and geology and the topography. What is missing in the discussion is the hydrogeology. That area is a sponge. The cemetery is a flat cap on top of this ridge. It just collects rainwater, it charges the groundwater basin. The area is called Laurel Springs for a reason. Springs pop out of the ground with significant rainfall. And in time from you have the snow, followed by a warm tropical moisture hits the West Coast, that water comes down. And I've seen water come out of the ground in places that you wouldn't, that you just don't know are there. And when these events happen, they, the water starts coming down. I'm very concerned about how development in this Lot 36 as, would be approved by your, if you guys approve the, what is it, the two, Class 2 adjustments, which would allow access up to the upper lots, you're going to be earth-moving, you're going to be changing the groundwater, the hydrogeology, which there has not been an assessment of the groundwater. How would the development affect the movement of water? Would it divert groundwater to springs that pop out of the ground on top of my parents' house here at 3628 Dogwood Drive? Would the change of the groundwater affect the roots of large old-growth Douglas fir trees? Those trees, if they're undermined and you have strong winds, there are some big trees. It's a woodland, it's an old-growth, Willamette Valley woodland.
Your time is up, I'm sorry. Does anyone have any questions? Counsel Kaser.
Thank you, thank you, John, for coming down. So just off the top of your head, if Phase Four was not developed, would that satisfy some of your concerns?
I think it would satisfy the impacts from Phase Four.
Because you're mostly, what I'm hearing you say is you're really mostly concerned with Lot 36, with the hydrogeography of that area and impacting water. Haven't heard a whole lot about traffic or anything else, so.
Well, I would think traffic.
That's my question.
Yeah, Dogwood.
If Phase Four wasn't approved or completed, Phase 1, 2, and 3 sounds like that's livable.
There are impacts of Phase 1, 2, and 3.
Sure, but just based on your testimony, just based on your specific testimony. That's just my question.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Phase 3 will affect the groundwater, that will affect the buildings of Phase, Phase 4 will affect Phase 3.
Okay. Anyone else? All righty, thank you. Pamela, you're on, and Deborah Gin? Gin, I'm sorry. Was I, oh, okay.
My name is Pamela Prozice, I live at 1946 Roberta Avenue. It is the home, see if I can get the mouse to work, right there on the corner of Spring Street and Roberta, so we're right below the Phase 4 area. I need to state my bias right away. When you move into a place like we live in, you fall in love with that place. And so you'll hear some emotion in my voice, because we're going to lose the place we love with this development. We moved into an area that had hillside behind us, old-growth, beautiful trees. We hike up there, and we're aware that, and we know that someone owns it and they have some rights to build, but we're heartbroken. We moved to that house about 10 years ago. We learned about this possibility of development. We've been involved in conversations with Mr. Green at the state. I was extremely disappointed to learn through this process that the, there's no criteria in disallowing a development like this for things like landslide. They do a geologic survey, but there is an Oregon geologic survey that was just mentioned that states clearly that this area is a landslide area. My neighbor was just telling me, the reason that Nelson Park exists is because years ago, neighbors looked at that park and thought a development that was going to happen there based on the topography of that land. There were three homes up above it, which is just right across, right directly across from the creek and the area where we live, three homes that slid and were, had to be vacated there. So that's, that's similar or the same topography that you're talking about here. I learned that green spaces are not a consideration in development of an area. I learned that there's no consideration for the wildlife, our owls, our deer. There's not a lot of consideration for runoff. We kept saying, "That's a spring street, there's springs coming into our yard." We've already addressed that tonight, but that's a concern. So after processing through, my biggest concerns at this point, because it seems that other concerns aren't those of the city, are those access roads. I know that we've talked about the immediate area, but we have three access roads into this area. We have River Road, we have Creighton Creek, and we have Madrona. I believe you've driven out in that area enough to know those streets. None of those roads are capable of handling increased traffic. There's already been building at River Road. We are at maximum in terms of where the streets are in access. Creighton Creek is dangerous. I go to Nelson Park daily with my dog. I've been hit, come close to being hit twice. I had a car come down the hill and brush across my stomach. Luckily, I was with a dog that heals nicely. Driver's disregard, I've got, if anybody wants to see it, I took some video. Cars do not stop at the stop signs, they do not go 25 miles per hour. They're on the sidewalks.
I'm sorry, time's up. Any questions? All right. Yes?
Thank you. I just wanted to, you talked about your experience with driver's disregard.
Yes.
There have also been cases on Creighton of a pet being hit.
Yes.
Would you care to explain that as well, as far as disregard, or?
Well, there's, there's a, it's called a pedestrian pathway, my husband was pointing out, it's not a bike road, it's about this wide, it goes along, and this was explained, the other side is the creek. So we walk along the area. I don't have a radar gun, but I've seen cars go 40 to 45. They, there's a stop sign, you can't see it, but Madrona comes down and then meets Creighton, there's a three-way stop. Again, I've got video of even major company trucks, they don't stop, they just go around the corner, they pick up speed going down the hill, they come down that hill behind Nelson Park, they don't stop there. It's, it's a mess, and I've watched children on Madrona, again, trying to cross that street. There is not sufficient infrastructure, we don't have buses. So thinking about getting access to the city, we don't have bus, we don't have proper roads or sidewalks, bike paths, any of that.
Thank you. Deborah, followed by Frances.
Good evening, my name's Deborah Gin. I live at 1830 Highlight Court. So I'm down at the bottom, just off of Creighton Scenic. We are faced with a lot of water problems down in that area already. This is Laurel Springs area. I know you can all see, there's a lot of problems with Phase 4. Go up there, take a look on Creighton Trail, the hillside is like this, I've hiked it from the cemetery down and back up, and it is very, very difficult. That's one huge problem. Another big problem is two. They want to build up, they're going to raise up and tear down. They're grading and they're building up. The potential for slides is very significant. Water. One inch of rain over that proposed development will produce over 270,000 gallons of water. Nobody has explained to me yet, I heard for the first time something about going into city water. We already have sewage spills. We're talking about putting it into some kind of, 270,000 gallons off of this into some kind of holding processing tank, and then going where? Creighton Creek already has significant flooding problems with the rain we have. Average three feet, last year, five feet of rain in that community. That is a lot of water. Not capable of that much redistributed water. Forested lands will absorb up to 18 inches of rainfall. With trees, vegetation, soil, they're taking away the vegetation, they're scraping away the topsoil. There will be very little area for any water to go down anymore. And the current springs, the diversion of water in the springs that we're already having problems, we have a lot of sump pumps in our crawl spaces in this neighborhood. It's, it's an overambitious plan. Approving this plan at this point without better proof, without better, more significant evidence, that it will be not, won't be doing harm, won't be doing any damage to our existing community, would, seems foolish.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Frances Gin? No, okay. Alan Sorn?
I'm here, I'll speak in private.
Ah, okay. Paul Graham? Followed by Simeon? Okay.
Well, you can go to this one, Paul, if you want. If you want to go to the other one, that's fine.
Good evening, my name is Paul Graham, and I live at 3723 Dogwood Drive South, that's right across the street from the Chester's home on the map, if you look at the number 3, where Dogwood Drive curves, I live right where the curve is, and I've been living there for several years, since 1983. I'm here to talk about the development of Phase 3 and Phase 4, and perhaps the development of Phase 1 and 2 may be the highest and best use of that land. Phase 3 and Phase 4, I'm not sure it's the highest and best use of the land, it's a really steep hill. In addition, if you've ever been out there, when it snows, the snow stays in our area, that's the area of Dogwood in which I live, for perhaps two, three, even four days after it's melted down at the 35 and 3400-foot block. It's a real ice bucket. And I can see if you build this fishhook road with 15 percent grade, you could have some real problems up there. One of the things that I've noticed is that there are hosts of people who hike the hill that would be Phase 3 and Phase 4. What I would like to do, if possible, would be to explore with a developer and the city, a possibility of creating a low-maintenance city park, a natural city park, not a developed one like Nelson Park, something that would allow the city to maintain the trail. And I would certainly be willing to consider the fact that the developer should be compensated, perhaps with receiving tax advantages, I understand there's some programs under which the developer can get tax advantages for donating the land. That, I think, would be the highest and best use of the area marked as 3 and 4. So I would be happy to meet with the developer to discuss that. I'm not anti-development, I think the developer is entitled to return on investment. I think one of the problems the developers had, though, was the developer has come up with this fishhook road in an effort to increase the number of lots on which the developer would build, increase the developer's return on investment. That's caused the deep cut, it's caused the 40-foot retaining wall and all these other problems. So if that area is going to be developed, I think we need to take another look at what is going to be developed. The original plan that I saw was that the area that's Phase 3 and Phase 4 would be long, narrow lots, rather than having a roadway cut across it. Anyhow, I'd like to repeat my invitation, I'd be happy to meet with the developer to discuss perhaps turning Phase 3 and Phase 4 into a low-maintenance city park. Thank you very much. Available for any questions?
Any questions?
I also want to say that I agree with the comments of the previous speakers regarding Phase 3 and Phase 4. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Simeon?
We're switching order.
You are Rick?
Yes.
Okay, take that line, right there, it's easier. You like this side? Rick Bingham.
Rick Bingham? Yeah, I'm Rick Bingham, and I live right here in the not apart. So we're surrounded. So we have a little bit of interest in this area with my wife Julie and our three lovely girls. We've lived there for about 20 years. And I want to thank the council for putting all the time into it, the city staff, really appreciate. Really appreciate that. Know it's hard work. I'm going to ask a very specific question, which is, does it not seem critical, does it not make sense, to require some of the key steps in this process to be put up front? Those two things are that demonstration, oh, my goodness, now how do I get back? Before Phase One, that the, that the city council go ahead and vote and approve the vacation of that lower half of Dogwood, because that's a very different process than the rest of the planning process, because the council has to make that call. And it also has to have significant support from all the neighbors in this area. So, it's possible it won't happen. And if it doesn't happen, then that changes all of the course of this development. And similarly, if Phase Four is not developed, and one of the greatest challenges for this development, which was mentioned by Mr. Green, is that you need S2, much higher pressure water pipes to get to this upper area. Those water pipes are not within the development. They have to be taken across other people's property to be brought into this area at considerable cost, as far as I know. And now, here's the bottom line. If, if this isn't developed, then none of this makes any sense. All of this grading from here through here is all done, and all the fill in Phase Two that you heard about is all done to get a running, to elevate this road, to get up that hill. So, so now you're going to have a development that's been designed for that reason, and yet it doesn't happen. And so, does it really make sense to do the development? Or alternatively, maybe there's a way to demonstrate that this, this can happen, this vacation of Dogwood, indeed, the high-pressure pipes can get up here? So, so that's my question. What, right now, the issue of the pipes only has to be addressed right before Phase Four, and the issue of the vacation of Dogwood only has to be addressed before Phase Two. Both of them, why not put them up front in the development to make it clear that this is all of one coordinated, phased, integrated project?
Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you for coming down, Mr. Bingham. I think you're the person to ask this, because I'm looking at Not Apart, and then following the south line of Not Apart, it's the same as the south line of proposed Phase Three. So, my question...
This is east.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I'm talking the south line, not the east line.
So, the upper end of your property?
Yeah. The south end of your property is the same line as the south end of Phase Three. It just continues through.
I see.
So, my question is, we've already established that the road there is 325, and then the top of Phase Four is 450. So, can you give me an idea between Dogwood and the bottom of Phase Three? Is that a gradual slope? Is it the same angle that you get on Four, or does Four go up higher?
So, going up this way?
Yeah, yeah.
No, that's...
It's hard to see the topographical lines there.
No, of course. No, this is, as you've heard from others, this is all very, very steep.
And so, Three is steep, too?
Three is steep as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very mu... Oops, sorry, Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, I, so, the, okay, the grade on Lot Three is steep. What is it on your property? Is it just as steep, or does it level off right there?
It's very, very steep here in this back part. It's only not steep here because it was all filled.
Okay, it was filled, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, and I want to commend you for the attention you're paying.
Your name, please?
Oh, Simeon Simonidis. I live right across from Phase Three, so I have the development on two sides, in front of me and to my side. I'm on Dogwood Street. So, I share the concerns of all the previous speakers. My major concerns have to do with Area Four and Area Three, because they're just above my house. And in my view, this is an accident waiting to happen. Flooding will be routine, and we're talking huge amounts of water, some of the neighbors described it, and landslides. If you haven't visited the area, please do. The hill is very, very steep. It's, this is not for human habitation, certainly not for 14 lots and for removing all those trees. So, the dangers that we are creating are immense, and we still don't have the study. I wonder, would we have another process whereby you will approve separately Phase Three and Four? If not, what Mr. Bingham said makes perfect sense. Let's decide that first, and then, and then allow the rest. So, it's, it's very dangerous. I think, you know, some houses could be built, but not as many. The dangers that you are creating are really, really very predictable, and one day, who knows? My heirs will be suing the city. I would not be around, and neither would you, but the landslides will happen one day, and the flooding will for sure happen yearly. So, thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. That's everyone I have signed up. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak on this item? Oh, no, wait a minute. Alan, you're up. You're going rebuttal. Okay. Anyone else? Any members of the public? Okay. Questions for staff?
No?
Questions for staff first.
Do we have, I'm going to, I'm going to start. Do we have any answer to these water issues? Do we have, do you have an answer for how you have resolved these various water issues we've heard about? I want to hear that again, if you gave it to us.
Sure. So, this is, this development, the concern is potentially making this situation that exists on the surrounding properties worse. The green stormwater standards that are in place now are designed to prevent stormwater from being...
Do they make it better?
They make it better.
That's what I want to, no. How do they make it better?
I'm going to have staff from Public Works maybe talk about that one.
Okay.
Hi, Glenn Davis, Public Works Chief Development Engineer. The, I mean, let's be practical. I'm an engineer, so I apologize, but I'll explain it simply. The, I'll try. What, so that when the water falls on the ground, it hits the grass, and the grass seeps into the ground, and that's, that's the source of the springs that happen. And the regulations require that the outfall from the development be no more than today. So, you take the water that was falling on the ground before, and now it falls on the rooftops, on the roads, and collects into this drainage system, and goes into a facility that, that controls the flow and treats the water. So, take the water that fell on the ground, that was spreading throughout the neighborhoods, collect it, convey it into these facilities, and control it. So, it's taking water away from that, that natural sheet flow, and making it, protecting it, consolidating it. And so, it actually does benefit the neighbors by having less uncontrolled water.
The 18 inches of rain then will be controlled. I heard several hundred, it sounded like quite a bit of gallons being handled. So, we have the capacity to handle that with the description you're giving me?
Yeah. The requirements are that there's no more total outflow than today, and so not only is it the same outflow, but it's also controlled.
And who pays for that?
The developer.
Okay. Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming down tonight. So, there, you talked about the standard today, and it meets the standard. There is also an alternative design standard for runoff that was developed. Is that correct with...
Into the mic, Counselor.
Sorry. There's also an alternative standard for runoff that was developed, that we had talked about before, and I wanted to know if this was something that was considered for this development, the alternative design standards for runoff?
I'm not sure what you're referring to. The code requirement in Chapter 71 requires that the, there's a requirement for a smaller event storm, that it meets the flow for the smaller event storm. I believe it's a two-year event. And then, a larger event storm also has to meet the same. So, for small storms and large storms, both of them have to not have more flow. So, I'm not sure what you're referring, for an alternate standard.
So, if I may, Dan Ashison, City Attorney, I think the council is referring to alternate design standards, so there's different methods of treating the runoff, whether it's bioswales or different facilities?
There's a, the design standards specify what's called green stormwater infrastructure, so that the water's treated with natural processes. So, that's the normal standard. That is the requirement for all developments to do that anyways, generally. So, I don't know if that's, that's an alternate. That's the, that is the standard.
Just conferring with the city attorney. Just one second. Is this...
There's different methods to, to treat the runoff, and the city engineer is referring to the green standards, which apparently are the normal way of doing it.
I mean, there may be, there's different methods. There's a way of doing it with maybe a pond, there's maybe ways of doing it with maybe a vegetated swale. There's all, there's a number of ways to do that.
So, were any of those, are those, are those dependent on the applicant to decide, or do city staff decide based on the topography what would be the most appropriate?
The, the process normally works that the developer's engineer proposes something based on their engineering judgment, based on what the standards require, and there's limitations. Certain kinds of facilities maybe work in hillsides better, some may work in flat areas better, groundwater may be a factor, those factors. The developer's engineer chooses an option, submits the plans to the city for us to review, and then we make sure it meets all the requirements. That's, that's the normal process.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't thi... Well, yes, I do have a question for you, Mr. Davis. One of the written testimony we got tonight, I cannot read it at all, it's very, very pale, but it shows a picture of a, of a house, and then it shows a picture of two-inch separation from house due to excess water runoff. So, and it looks like the house is on Spring Streets, 3816 Spring Street. So, my question is, is what you've just talked about, those sort of problems are not going to get any worse, because the code has been changed in order to make sure that the runoff that is currently there will not be increased by the development. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have a few more, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay. Then, I think there was a mistake in the information about the traffic study, and maybe that's a planning question. I think I heard Dr. Donovan say it's 200 trips per day, and is that what it is, Mr. Green, or is it 2,000?
So, it's 200 for a subdivision that would be only accessed by local streets. This is accessed by a minor arterial, so it's 1,000.
Okay. So, under Mr. or Dr. Donovan's figures, because of the minor arterial, the number of trips does not trip a traffic study?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Then, I'm interested in the landslide ordinance. We've heard some discussion of the landslide ordinance, and I think it was the discussion of our ordinance.
Yeah.
And, you know, otherwise known as the Evan White Ordinance.
Thank you.
So, I don't know who's the person to talk about the landslide ordinance. Okay, Mr. Davis, you're up here for good.
So, did you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, no, I just, yeah. I will, I will phrase my answer in the form of a question. How does the landslide ordinance apply to the situation we have here in Lots Two, Three, and Four?
Okay, no, thank you.
You're welcome.
There's really two ordinances. There's a, there's a landslide ordinance, which is Chapter 810, and then there's a separate grading ordinance, and I believe we're speaking, the Evan White Ordinance would be the grading ordinance.
Is the grading, okay.
That's Chapter 82. So, and, and Chapter 810 requires a geological assessment to be submitted with the tentative application, and that's what we received. And we actually received, more than that, we received a geotechnical report, which is actually exceeding the minimum requirement for this. So, we got more than the minimum for this part of the process. And that, that's where the report you'll see. In the grading ordinance, before they can move any, any dirt, they have to submit plans showing what they're planning to do in engineering detail, and also complying with those geotechnical reports and providing the additional geotechnical information, as we've talked about. So, before they do any grading, that process will require...
So, they're going to have to satisfy both the landslide and the grading ordinance before anything can be developed there?
Yes.
Does that, I want to, just if I may...
Yeah, go ahead, please, please.
Does that, the 40-foot retaining wall caught my attention. I realize that's not probably what they're going to do. What, is that 40 feet tall or 40 feet long?
40 feet tall.
In that geotechnical report?
I'm not su... I mean, the, there's a, if the engineer proposed a 40-foot high wall, we would have concerns as well.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. Okay. Counselor, go ahead.
Can I piggyback on your landslide question?
Yeah, yeah. I have a different area, so if Counselor Casey, please...
Thank you. So, I was looking at Phase Four, Lot 100, right now, the landslide risk is a three-point. And under the proposed development, it would increase to five points. And Lot 200, right now, it's rated at five points, and under the proposed development, it would raise to 10 points, which is double. And according to our code, anything at nine or more points is a Category C or High landslide hazard risk, and requires a geotechnical report. My question is, is have we done development in these Category C high places in Salem before?
I, I believe your math is a little bit, little bit off, I think. I apologize for that, but five points...
Well, it does say in the staff report that it will increase the Lot 100 to five points and Lot 200 to 10 points.
Thank you for clarifying. A five-point landslide hazard, the, the way the code works is there's a landslide hazard point and an activity point, and I believe it's five point plus three, which is eight, which is a geological assessment, I believe. But anyways, it's not the first time we've had one of those. And generally speaking, when we have these kinds of projects, the geotechnical engineer will submit reports to us. It is typical that the city will actually hire our own geotechnical consultant as a peer review for those projects, because they are the highest scrutiny in those situations. So, that's, that's my expectation here. There's no requirement, but the code does give the director the authority to do that. So, it's, it's very likely that we'd have that kind of scrutiny here.
Okay. So, it will trigger, are you saying there will be a peer study, then? We will have a consultant operating separately that'll be triggered by something that you just described?
The code allows for the director to choose that.
Now, will that happen?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Anderson?
Counselor Cook may have a follow-up question on the landslide issues. If you do, I'll defer, because I'm moving on to another area.
Landslides?
Go ahead, Counselor.
Okay, thanks. First of all, with respect to the retaining wall, it's 40 feet high. I'm looking at the, what the redman says, site grading will result in near vertical cuts in the construction of a possible 40 feet high retaining wall. We have no idea how wide it's going to be. I didn't ask that question, but in order to be 40 feet high, it's going to be pretty wide. Yeah. Now, my, my other question, and I'm wondering, Mr. Green or Kenny, Mr. Larson, if you could put up the, there's like a Google Earth kind of map of the, of the phases. Oh, yeah, yeah. Went by it, yeah. So, we've done a lot of talking about Number Four and a little bit less about Number Three. I'm interested in Two, which is pure green right now. Is that, is that correct, or is that One?
One is the top.
One, One is the pure green. That's One. Okay, so, where is Two on that particular map? One is the pure green. That's One. Okay, so where is Two on that particular map? Okay. Well, I can see them. So it is the map with the lines in it, the green lines in it, the part with the green line in it, in the direct center?
Those are platted lots today.
Oh, those are not a part. That's the Binghams over there.
Yeah, right, right there.
Okay, so that's Three, okay. So, you know, I have concern -- yeah, that -- no, I see where Three is, I see where Four is, and now I know where Two is. So it's kind of intriguing to me about we're going to build, in order to avoid a 15 percent grade, or more than a 15 percent grade, we're going to raise the level of the road, and then once we raise the level of the road, we are going to have to raise the level of the lots that abut the road. Is that a standard sort of practice?
Normal engineering would be to balance the land, and so that is not unusual, that roads will have to be filled or cut. And obviously, when you -- if you were to cut a road 20 feet and not grade the lots, then you have a 20-foot cliff that you can't get the drive -- the car into. Yeah, so that's a normal part of engineering, to balance that cut and fill for lots. So that is typical.
And even doing that, there's still going to be a portion of, I think it's Dogwood Road that cuts through Number Two, that is still -- we're still going to have going east-west a 15 percent grade.
In portions, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McCoy. Sorry that took so long.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We hang around too much. He just goes right past me and goes to somebody else. Hi, Glenn. A couple things. I guess I'm going to try to voice what I think I heard from all the testimony as to the whole process we're dealing with, and that is, how can the city council say, though I know the answer? I mean, I think the question I heard inherent in everything was, how can you approve this to be built when you don't know what's going to happen? How it's going to be developed? What's the water turnoff thing's going to be? How are you going to get everything up to the road? But we're supposed to approve it and say, "Go forward." Is that sort of right, folks? That's sort of what I heard everybody say, right? So probably Peter's going to have -- but that's sort of the question there to somebody.
Now, the new guy.
Nora.
So this is, at this stage, we're reviewing the tentative subdivision plan, so, you know, there isn't always -- in any subdivision, there's going to be things that are kind of figured out through engineering detail, once the tentative plan is approved. That could just be designing streets or things like that, that aren't done at the same level of detail at this phase, but that is a fairly typical practice to have a tentative plan approval and then a final plan approval, once utilities and streets have been installed, for instance.
Okay, so again, if we -- I'll ask another question here. We vote to move this through. At that point, unless there's some engineering that can't be figured out and build it, it's going to get built. Is that correct?
Yeah, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. That's correct, but they have to approve to us. For example, there -- Mr. Grant spoke to the fact that they still need to figure out how to bring water up to the development. If they can't figure out how to bring water to the development, they can't build, because there's no permit can be issued. Mr. Davis spoke about the issues related to the geotechnical. If they can't satisfy the geotechnical issues, then a permit won't be issued. So what the council -- if the council approves this, you've approved the land being able to be subdivided, but in a difficult site such as this, there's still a lot of work to be done.
And so, I'm doing -- asked some of these questions, because I think I'm trying to ask them for everybody that's in the room here, so they get a feeling for what's going on. And so, when these plans come in, we have engineers, like Glenn, and a variety of others, and staff, and experts in the different areas that we're talking about here, whether it's storm, you know, stormwater removal, or pumping the water up the hill, or any of these things, right? They're all on staff, and they review those plans and say yea or nay, or debate them, and all those things.
Right, and if there's something extraordinary, like a 40-foot retaining wall, then we will retain experts that, you know, are more adept at those specialty items. We don't see a 40-foot retaining wall every day, so, you know, we know how to pump water, we know how to take care of sewer, we know how to take care of stormwater, but a retaining wall such as that is something that we would probably, you know, hire an expert, our expert, to review and advise us before we issued a permit for something like that.
Okay, one final, let's see how to phrase this one. And I think maybe you just said it. I'd feel more comfortable, with all this is involved, we hired somebody that's an expert in some of these areas, just to make sure, number one, have an outside eye looking at this, not the staff eye, to take some pressure off of you all, frankly, in the city, but also to give these folks some comfort that there's an expert coming in here with the, you know, no preconceived notions, to look at what's going on, and say, "Yeah, this is okay," or, "No, it isn't okay." Because this is, I mean, you know, for me, this is -- and then, and I'm going to ask you this question. This is the most requirements I've seen, 20, in anything that's come up in the three years I've been, or it's typically four, or five, or six, or something, but not 20, which in itself says, "We got issues here."
This is a very difficult site. There's no question about it. This is not the -- we've had difficult sites before. You know, anytime, you know, much of the land that is left in Salem to develop inside the urban growth boundary is our tough sites to the west and to the south. This happens to be, you know, sort of an infill site, and it hasn't developed before, because it's a difficult site. I mean, the easy ones get done first, because it's just the simple economics. Just to be clear, Counselor, the, you know, the applicant, we don't design subdivisions for applicants. So the applicant will propose how they lay out the site, and Mr. Grant spoke to the fact that it may not -- speaking of Phase Four, it may not lay out that way ultimately when they're done. So when those plans come in, then we will take a look, and if there are things that are extraordinary, like this discussion of a retaining wall, or if there's other things that are extraordinary, then yeah, we would absolutely, you know, get outside experts to give us a hand, and make sure that what's being proposed is correct, and have that debate and that discussion with the designers if we are in disagreement.
Go ahead.
And finally, I would say to the folks here, that's sort of how this works. You know, we're sort of the volunteer group that oversees things. City manager and the staff pretty much run the city. They're the experts. We're sort of the
Policy walks.
Policy walks, yeah, if you will. And this is one where that's what occurs. So when we do it, we listen to what they say and what they recommend. Staff recommendations, a lot of times, what goes through, and then it's up to the experts, and they are experts, and they care. They're taking care of the needs of you and the citizens, not the developer when they're looking at this stuff.
Counselor Lewis.
Actually, I just had a question on the inventory. It's my assumption, I think that you touched on it, that as we use up our available land to build on inside the city limits, we are being left with the hills in South and West Salem. I guess the question would be, is this such a unique site that it should scare us, or is this what we're going to be looking at as we continue to develop those hills?
So Counselor Lewis, Norman Wright, Community Development Director, I think part of this question I can try to answer, just from my perspective, coming in fairly new. Sites of this nature are very similar to sites that we find in West Salem, for example, in terms of those slopes and those challenging grades for streets that are constructed in that region. So these are sites that we have seen before. Certainly, these are sites that we will see more of, as has been mentioned by others, including Peter. Sites that we will see more of as less available lots are available within the urban growth boundary. But I don't know that there's anything that is of a unique concern, that hasn't been seen or addressed in other parts of the city already, with previous history and previous development in the West Salem portions, for example.
Counselor Nagy.
Counselor Cook had her hand up before.
Counselor Cook's talked, and she'll talk again.
Two questions, and a comment. I'll go with the comment first. We have approved things like this in West Salem, as far as grades and what have you go. We have a standard for different types of roadways and the grade. Is there similar for driveways? Because I know I've seen driveways, and the people get locked or trapped in their houses out south, because essentially, they can't pull their car out of the garage. Is there a limit on driveway slope?
There was. In the code, at one time, there isn't currently.
Okay. And then, to kind of follow on with Counselor McCoy's point, and our decisions are based on criteria, and from what the staff report has, at this level, those criteria have been met, but they come back with geotechnical reports, and they have to change that. How do these people see what's happening at that point in time? Can you describe the process that will happen during those subsequent steps? How people will be involved?
Yeah, so in terms of between this approval and a final plat, where you'd have a subdivision recorded, planning, we're mostly looking for what we call substantial conformances. Are the same number of lots generally the same places? Have the conditions been addressed? And so there's really, in that sense, not a lot of
They actually took those lots on Phase Three, and actually extended them up into Four and made large skinny lots. How would anybody know, one, that that happened, and two, have an opportunity to comment on the process?
So there's a subdivision modification process. It's an administrative review, and the criteria for it are very narrow. Essentially, it has to be consistent with the conditions of original approval, and it can't change the physical appearance and impact on surrounding properties, to kind of paraphrase. That doesn't allow for a lot of changes through a modification, so there could be -- it may require the applicant to apply for a new subdivision for, if it's a later phase, you know, Three or Four, you know, they may have to apply for a new subdivision under the code that we --
And that would be similar process to this.
What type of modifications are allowed? Yeah, it would have to go back to the beginning, essentially.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to know if there were any additional requirements that this Phase Four would have to do in Phase Four and Phase Three, because of it abutting up with the cemetery? Is that just considered regular law? There's no special requirements because of runoff, or because of erosion with the cemetery, meaning a property that's shared?
No.
Okay. And also, one of the concerns, Counselor McCoy was talking to concerns that he heard today. I heard from people in the neighborhood about concerns with existing flooding in Croizen Creek, and also with existing traffic issues. While the current applicant is held to the design standards for that property development, is there any additional plan within the city about when these areas are going to be approved or addressed that are outside of this development?
In terms of the street system, or?
And water for Croizen Creek.
Now, these -- a lot of these issues related, for example, to the sidewalk on Madrona, or the runoff on Croizen await, you know, future, ultimately, future dollars. We understand the issues. Really, it's just resource.
And the issue that was brought up in testimony about using some of these funds to directly target this area, that's not applicable in this case?
I don't know what those funds are.
With the SDCs from this particular development, those will go back into general?
They go into the general pot. Typically, SDC, Systems Development charges, are only used in a specific area when it is an SDC-eligible project that's being built by the developer to mitigate an issue, and then they get some or all of that, some of their SDCs back for building that project. But in this case, this project isn't big enough to trigger any regional improvements, and therefore, the SDCs generated just go into the pot.
There is an arterial streak within the development, so there will be a small
Right, so, right, so, no, Croizen scenic.
Oh, Croizen scenic.
So the extra width and depth, because it is an arterial, that differential between a local street and a minor arterial will be SDC reimbursable, so they'll get a little money back. Thank you, Glenn.
And it was brought up tonight, the suggestion of doing a park, or possibly approving, you know, part of and not all of the development. That's -- you had spoke to, I think, Chris, about how you don't design the subdivision for the applicant, so it's either all or nothing. And as far as agreeable to park or further set aside, that's not on the table at this point. Is that right?
We have to review the -- what the applicant has proposed, so it's up to them, and yeah, we can't, you know, modify what their proposal is.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Kaysir.
Thank you. I just have a few questions that were raised through public comment, and thinking about this on my own. So the first one is, Phase Two, I didn't see that there was an increased landslide risk associated with Phase Two. Just it seems like the points increased on Phase Three and Four. Is that correct?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. It's generally, it ties really closely to slope, though.
Okay. I noted the staff report, it was just Phase -- actually, I think it was just Phase Four, with a landslide risk increase there, so. The existing houses in that area, are they built on fill? Those houses built in the 50s and 60s? I mean, do we have any idea they're built on fill, or not built on fill? One of the people testifying said it was, their house was built on fill. Do we have any clue if this is in this area or not? Okay. I'm guessing not. You know if your houses are built on fill? Well, what, at least one person said they're
Yeah, we're going to knock that off right now.
Built on fill.
So if you've got questions, you put them to staff.
If there are, is there other parts of the city where there's 15 percent grade for roadways? Could you identify?
There's a street right next to Madrona that's 20 percent.
20 percent, okay.
As one example.
Okay, yeah. And there's other examples in the 15 percent grade area.
It doesn't have sidewalks either, so careful.
There's been, from what I could tell, about eight subdivisions with adjustments for this 12 percent grade standard in the last 10 years or so.
Okay. And what are the code requirements for connections to existing streets? Is there any kind of requirement for improvement to an existing street, or that -- what does that look like? What's required under code for that to look like? You're building a new street, and you're connecting to an existing street. Is there standards for that?
So if there is a street that dead ends at the property, there's a requirement for a connection. So that was, I know one thing the applicant mentioned in their testimony was concerned about fire access, and that requirement is also there to meet the connectivity standard for that street. There are standards that are specified in Public Works Design Standards for Tapers.
So if you're like, in this case, where you're going from a proposed, I forget the name of it, the one that connects the balm, so you're going from a, you know, a street with sidewalks and all of that, and it's going to connect to an existing street that's narrow, no sidewalks, you know, no shoulder, that sort of thing, there's standards to follow for that, or?
I can speak briefly. Historically, the standard has been safe two-way traffic, can two vehicles pass on that street. We have a development in West Salem on Michigan State Lane, where they had a narrow portion of Michigan State. We actually required an off-site improvement to widen that, to allow for enough width for cars to pass. So that's normally the case, when you don't have enough room. That's been past practice for the last 10 years or so.
Okay.
But there's no -- just to be clear, there's no requirement for running extra sidewalk, or doing urban-style improvements, so it's strictly a vehicular, and only for a certain stretch. So, again, this, it doesn't trigger improvements outside of the development beyond those little pieces.
But there is a specification to taper from the wider street to the narrower one.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor McCoy.
Back to the issue of, I guess, sort of, how do we know what they said they're going to do is what they do? I mean, and we hear the response is, well, they're going to have to come to us, going to ask permission before they do something. to ask permission before they do something. So do we have people out there inspecting these jobs to see if indeed it's being built the way the plans are submitted?
Yes.
On an ongoing basis? And that's everything, you know, erosion control and all that stuff? Peter knows what I'm talking about.
Yeah, so there's, I think there's two parts to your question, Counselor, if I may. The first part is, does the site lay out as approved by the subdivision?
Yes.
And so that is done at the plat. So, you know, pins are set and properties are laid out so that the boundaries are established. Then, then plans have to be submitted to the Public Works Department for the roads, the water lines, the sewer lines, the stormwater lines. We review those plans, we issue a permit, and then we inspect every step of the way. And they have to be built according to plan. So, so yeah, we inspect those all the way through to final acceptance. Because in the end, what the, what the developer is doing is building a public street on our behalf. So they're building it, they're going to dedicate it to us, so we want to make sure that those streets and all that infrastructure itself that we're going to be public is built to our standards so that we can maintain, you know, we can operate and maintain it into the future.
And finally, how do you know, other than conceptually, that no more rainwater is going downhill than was before? I mean, I guess theoretically you can know that, but how practically, is there a way to measure it?
It's via, it's a calculation based on, you know, the existing topography, vegetation, rainfall, et cetera, soil type, et cetera.
You made one remark, Mr. Fernandez, I want to just follow up on. I was taken with Nancy Lacy's comment about her water pressure. What's going on with water pressure? What's going to be required? What will it take?
All right, I think Glenn can address the water system.
Okay, so the water system, for a brief background, the city's water system is broken into pressure zones where you have a region of pipes that are all connected with one pressure for a certain range of elevation. So at the top of the elevation, the pressure might be lower, and the bottom of the elevation, the pressure might be higher. Because all the pipes are the same elevation in that band. And we name those service levels, is what we call them. So they start with G zero at the bottom. G zero then pumps up to this S one with the reservoir and pump station system that has the same common pressure. And then pressures, pressure systems up again to S two and so on. It goes all the way to S four in the South Salem area. So this area, this property has two levels on it. It has an S one level toward the bottom part with water systems that are all there today. And then, and then a higher elevation portion called S two that, and there is no S two piping to the site. And so the portions to the east of the property have S two. And those are really, those are the higher pressure areas. So, so the pressure systems that they're having on the east side really have very little to do with what's going on, on this property here. This is lower and has more, more pressure in it because it's low.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? All righty. Seven minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counselors. For the record, I am Alan Sorum. My address is 250 Church Street, Southeast Salem, Oregon. With only seven minutes, you know, we can't cover everything. I think the question and answer from staff was very informative. The applicant, as it was noted, would like to request the counselors to approve the staff report. And there are no objections from the applicant at this time regarding the conditions of approval, even though, as Counselor McCoy noted, wow, there's a lot of conditions of approval. And, and that's true. Because there are a number of issues that are resolved via condition of approval, but they're not problems in a way, you know, I'm choosing my words carefully. But I think it's important to distinguish the two because it really informs us what we're doing here tonight. The standard review, when we're looking at the criteria, because we're in a land use hearing, doing, you know, reviewing, does the application, is the evidence in the record adequate to support the criteria, either entirely or subject to conditions of approval? When they're subject to conditions of approval, then we ask ourselves, well, is there, is there evidence in the record to determine that it's possible, that it's feasible to satisfy those conditions of approval? And that was the back and forth that we heard primarily with the public works staff. So if we were to think about it in an analogy, you know, we're talking about the tip of the iceberg now. And, and we get a feel for what the iceberg is, but we don't know exactly how deep and how large it is. So that's one analogy. The other way to think about it is, you have 120 days to approve a tentative plat approval. When you have a phased subdivision like this, that can be, it can take up to 10 years for the final plat to fully be developed for all of those phases. So obviously, there's got to be a lot of work. And that's why Mr. Grins and Mr. Fernandez and Davis would, you know, they know each other so well and they've been working forever. But you heard today, Mr. Grins testify that, you know, you've heard of his credentials, but he's reviewed the conditions of approval and those are deemed feasible. Staff, in the staff report, it explains that they've reviewed all the evidence and came to the conclusion that satisfying all of the conditions of approval is feasible. And what that does is it means that we will construct improvements, we will have engineering that will ultimately satisfy all the criterion at final plat. And how do you make sure that that happens? What if it doesn't? Well, Mr. Davis coined the phrase zombie subdivisions. I mean, it doesn't always work. Sometimes things, you know, they don't happen and those lands sit undeveloped for a number of years. But it's not really for this body or the folks in the room here tonight to try and determine, well, will everything pencil? Will it really happen? Will this happen, you know, now? As Mr. Green said, you know, I review them as they're presented to me. And that's his job and he's doing it accurately. It would be unfair and actually unlawful to ask him to do too much. One thing to note as well, just for purposes of the record, you know, there are a lot of conditions of approval that the applicant is okay. But if, if there were motions for additional conditions of approval, I think that would be problematic for a couple of reasons. One, conditions of approval have to flow from the criteria themselves. And as staff and applicant who explains that the existing tentative and concept plans do address all the criteria. Second, when we're dealing with residential development, we have needed housing laws. Okay? This is just another part of the overall land use structure. And we don't want housing, we don't want sprawl. So we have to go ahead and we have to encourage the housing that's within the urban growth boundary. And one of those things that this legislature's done in the furtherance of that policy is they've adopted a statute generally called the Needed Housing Statutes and say, you can only have conditions of approval if they're based on unambiguous criterion and if they don't cumulatively create a burden and some effect. So we don't have the ability to just go ahead and add Condition of Approval Number 21, 22, 23 in kind of, well, can we get the votes? Can we get, you know, concessions here to make everybody happy? You know, we had the proclamation earlier in memoriance of World War II in Pearl Harbor and, you know, the Churchill quote came to my mind this evening. Democracy is the worst form of government, except for all the rest. And I think Oregon land use is very much in line with that. It's the worst way to handle, you know, these land use decisions, except for all the rest. And, you know, we have to deal with decisions and compromises and we have to deal with the state statutes and the local criteria. I think staff has done a good job in doing that. So we do ask for the approval. The last thing, and I'll wrap up unless there's additional comments from Mr. Grins. Counselor Cook made a comment, and I'm not sure if it, it seemed pertaining to the subject property and maybe as additional condition of approval regarding a trail, the Salem Trail Alliance and the Croizen Trail or not. I'm not sure if there is going to be a motion regarding city action concerning the subject property at a later date while we have a public hearing. I'd like that issue to be fleshed out. Maybe I misinterpreted? No? Okay.
I believe you did misinterpret.
Okay, thank you. So I just, I didn't want any confusion. So with that, unless there's questions for myself, technical questions, I'll defer to Mr. Grins.
Well, one, I do have a question. One comment that I heard, maybe I heard it wrong, too. What, what if you didn't include Phase Four? Does that-
Does that what?
Just say, just say-
You know, it-
Too big a condition, too small a condition, what?
I'm sorry.
Would you, if, if Phase Four, would you be interested in withdrawing Phase Four?
We can't do any modifications to the application right now. It's, that's the application that has been noticed and is before the body. So, you know, there's a design, conceptual design in multiple phases. If there was a business proposition with neighbors or there was a business proposition with the city, or, you know, when they do the subsequent engineering, oh, the comment regarding the 44-wall, that wasn't planned, by the way, but that was saying like that's one of the possible mitigations. But if they determine that that doesn't pencil, then maybe they go ahead and they modify Phases Three and Four as discussed tonight. Because, you know, there's no pride in business. If you hear somebody have a good idea and you think, gosh, I could actually make that work, you know, you go ahead and you take that. But as Mr. Green said, that would have to be a subsequent land use application and it would be a modification. People would get noticed of that and we would have a public process to handle that matter.
Okay. And it is your position that all the criteria required by statute and city code have been met?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Counselor Cook. Oops, I'm going to close the hearing. Now, Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been a really difficult hearing and I need to make a motion right now and then I can speak to it, right?
You're going to make your, your-
All right.
-motion to the issue at hand.
I would like to make a motion to move to staff recommendation.
Okay. Second by Nanki. Any discussion?
All right, so we're going to discuss it?
Besides you, yeah, go ahead.
Right, okay. So I have, there's lots of issues that came up with this and I know that it meets the current design standards. The, there are just multiple issues as far as the slope, the flag lot coming through. Somebody had said, you know, this is, they can see the future and this is, you can see it's not good and waiting to happen. And I also understand Mr. Grimm with, you know, the developers wanting to know the maximum amount, the maximum that can happen with this property. So I think that, that that's definitely a job done. But I was really struck with what Pamela testified with. You know, concerns about landslide, about green space and about wildlife. And how those may not be incorporated currently into the standards which this may meet. There's just, it's so problematic. If this could be something where Phase Four would not be included, I think it would have a better chance of moving on. That's just what I'm feeling right now.
Okay. Counselor Anderson.
I would like to propose a substitute motion. My substitute motion would be the staff recommendation with the exception of Phase Four.
I don't think we can do that.
Or should it be an amended motion?
I'm not sure that's in order at this point on this issue. And I want to check with the city attorney.
Sure. It's, basically, you can't just remove a section of the approval. You either have to approve it as proposed, add additional conditions to the development.
Okay, so I can't even make an amendment to that. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. Okay?
Counselor Kaser.
Thank you. So for all the public comment that we got in reading the staff report, it seems like the main concern is really around Phase Four. It's around that very steep slope, the driveway, the grade, the retaining wall, the access road, the 500-foot lawn, whatever, and all the people living below that. And it's a very steep site. I'm really concerned about the landslide risk, which is in our own code. It would be high for those lots. And I don't think that's a great idea to put buildings up there on that steep of a slope. It seems like, from hearing testimony tonight, I heard nothing about Phase One or Two, a little bit about Phase Three, but it was really all about Phase Four and the risk of landslide and water and all that kind of stuff. So I don't know, I'm not really in favor of the development. And if it has to be something where we have to deny it and then it comes back without that phase, I mean, that might behoove the developer. I hate to have to do it like that because I think Phase One and Two are actually not bad and it's buildable land, it's easier, there's no landslide risk or water concerns. But that's kind of what I heard from public testimony and I'm not convinced that the landslide risks meet code for Phase Four.
We have testimony from our staff that it does meet code. Okay, I want to correct any suggestion that that has not been said, because it has, so. But I do think what you may want to ascertain with staff as we discuss this or figure out in your, are we satisfied that the staff has described a process that would forestall development if it is inappropriate because it can't meet the stormwater standards, the slide standards, all those other standards that are in place? And what I heard was, not only will they be reviewing it, but they will also be hiring outside assistants to make sure that if it can be done, how it's done is done correctly, if it can be done. And what the, what the spokesman for the developer said is, they have done enough work, and this is preliminary, we're not there yet, to say it can be done, we think. Now, they have something in place that I thought I heard, a 40-foot retaining wall ain't going to be part of the plan, but, but that there are potentially ways that this can be done. And if it can't, it won't be approved. That's kind of how I heard it. Now, maybe I'm wrong. But there are requirements, they have to meet certain requirements. And the question is not, do you believe it won't happen, but will there be objective evidence that it won't happen?
Can I respond to you?
Sure.
Well, with that in mind, and thank you for the clarification.
I'm not sure, clarify. I'm just trying to work my way through.
Well, it doesn't my mind because it's important to separate, you know, my feelings from objective criteria. So perhaps one of the conditions we could put on this is requiring the applicant to go through that geotechnical study earlier for Phase Four. Because that would essentially put the onus back on to the applicant to show that this is possible. It's not just a feeling or a preliminary, but it's actually a decided thing. That is, that's an option.
Yeah, I'd like to know where that, where that geotechnical evaluation would occur then, I think, to whether it would satisfy Counselor Kaser's suggestion. Glenn, somebody?
I'll go and speak.
Go ahead, go ahead, Glenn.
So the normal process would be, when Phase Four is proposed, that there would be a geotechnical grading plan for Chapter 82 and a geotechnical report that's attached to that. And then those would be approved as part of the director's process in order to approve the construction plans. That's the normal process. And so I'm not sure when you would want to see that come in before that.
Well, from, how I understand it is, the report that came back for Phase Four is preliminary. And what I, what I think you're saying is, it's not until the time of development that they'd actually go through with a full report to see if it actually is feasible. Is that correct? Am I understanding that?
That's the normal process.
Correctly.
Would we get to see that, would we get to see that as a council that report?
No, so that would be at the time of, prior to a plat being recorded.
We're still live, could we see it?
Counsel, you could get a copy of the report, but you wouldn't be able to change your decision.
No, no, but I think, I think, though, what the counselor's asking is some certainty that is both available to the council and to the public, that there is, there's been a really full, fulsome review. Counselor Anderson, maybe you can clarify this.
I don't know if, I thought maybe Director Fernandez had a response to that issue and then I'll-
Well, I have a thought, if I may, Mayor. Through the testimony, it, I understand that, that some of the grading in Phase Two has to be done a certain way to allow for Phase Four. So in terms of timing for what Mr. Davis was speaking to, to get to Counselor Kaser's issue, we could require, the council could require- issue, we could require, the council could require the Phase Four Geotech as part of the condition, as part of the approvals, of the construction approvals for Phase Two. So that way, the cut and fill that's happening, to be able to move the road up, to make Four operate, you know, we can understand that at Phase Two. If Phase Two, if it doesn't work, then Phase Two can be designed so that they don't have to accept that extra fill. So that might be a way to address what Counselor Kaser is trying to get to.
I would suggest caution with that approach, because whether or not Phase Four is developed in the manner that the applicant proposes, it has to, any land division has to show that it's not impeding future development of land. There will be a street going to that in some location in order for the subdivision to meet approval criteria. So it wouldn't be a matter of, either in terms of process or approval criteria, being able to say, you know, Phase Four isn't going to work out as proposed, therefore, there won't be a street going up to that property. There has to be, there has to be a street stub to that property, because it's within the city and UGA and undeveloped.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you very much. I think I have a question or two for the city attorney. Obviously, by my proposed unparliamentary motion that I made, that's probably the kindest word I may be able to say to it, for that, let's say, I want to get rid of Phase Three, or Phase Four, excuse me, in this development. So in order for that to happen procedurally, I would have to vote against the motion on the table, and then would I be allowed to do a new motion?
No.
Or that would come back at some later time?
I'd have to come back with a new design plan.
Well, I'm asking the attorney here.
Counselor Anderson, what I, the point I was trying to make is that you can't just approve part of their development. You have to approve their entire proposal.
Got it, got it.
Or not.
So what would happen, let's say, if this was defeated, the developer might come back with Phase One, Two, and Three, and then we would look at it again?
That's correct. Now, staff might be able to have a discussion with them before you vote to see if they can withdraw the portion.
Right, I understand that, and that's often the way things are done, I would suspect. But I, just a couple of comments. You know, I am a lawyer, I do understand process, I think. And I understand that we have to look here and say, okay, are the criteria met? And that is something the staff does for us, and we rely upon the staff for their expertise as we should, and we have a good staff, they do a good job. But if that's all we did, rely on the staff, what are we doing here as a city council? You know, all we have to do is have the template or the grid, and the staff says it complies with everything, and so here we are. Now, I know you want to respond to that, Mayor, and I will, but we're, you know, part of the things we do is, we look at this in the way that benefits the whole public, not just the technical thing. I'm reminded of another Churchill quote, which is, "That is something up with which I will not put."
Yeah, I do want to respond just briefly. This, this actually was approved and was called up by the council. This isn't coming to us other than through that process. So this is not a thing brought to us for us to, it's for us to take a look, were the I's dotted, were the T's crossed, were all the requirements met, and what is the public's reaction? And that's part of what we have to sort our way through. But I think when you look at land use law, we're in a fairly tight framework we have to operate in. And then I think, just as a matter of policy, I'll just share the policy with you. I do not agree personally with expanding our city boundaries out past Corden Road, where it's nice and flat, it'll be very easy to build houses, it will not create these kinds of challenges. I remember in the 1970s, when this area was added to the comprehensive plan for housing in West Salem Hills where. And I don't think people at times thought about what this was going to be like as it gets developed, and hopefully, construction technology and the level of code requirements we've set have met the standards that allow housing to be built here, because this is all that's left, is this kind of land. Or we can go out, Croizen Road, and onto the farmland, and that would be tragic. So that's the kind of problem we're facing, and you know that, I'll just share it with you again.
I agree with that, Mr. Mayor, but even under my proposal, I think there are 46 lots proposed, and Four is 11. So I understand the issues, and I agree with you, we need to build within the urban growth boundary. And if I recall, under our housing needs analysis, the only place we were really short is in multiple unit housing, and we tried to take care of that in the last meeting, at least somewhat, with the development we approved over off Silverton Road.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just as far as from a process end, if council were to vote in opposition to staff recommendation, staff would have to come up with findings that they would have to present to us that says, why does this not meet said criteria? And everything that we're discussing right now will be part of the record that could potentially go to Luba, which it would. So, and the only thing I could see in that would be that we somehow challenged the geotechnical, which already has been said that they need to do more. So from, at this end, that I can't see anything with staff trying to make findings. I think it would be very difficult to deny this application.
Okay. Counselor Kaser.
It's full of comments in it. I agree with Counselor Nanki. I think, you know, I guess for the neighbors, depending on how you lean, the best outcome would be for this geotechnical report to come back negatively, and for that report to say, no, it's not possible, and Phase Four becomes now kind of off limits, because that's the requirement, that's the condition put on this application. But unfortunately, the land use, we are in a bind, we can't just say, no, we don't want these steep hillsides being built on, because we're concerned about things. We have code that handles those types of situations. So, yeah, and I feel like, just based on the applicant's representative here, that this might be something appealed to Luba, kind of, I was getting the impression, so. So unfortunately, I think, you know, it's meeting the criteria, even though I don't feel great about it.
Okay. All done? Okay, let's, let's go ahead and vote on this, then. All those in favor of Counselor Cook's motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Cook and Anderson are noes. Motion passes. Just a second, I've got to find my agenda. I'm going to ask unanimous consent to return to the element, to the agenda item, council and city manager comment. Okay? Any objections?
The motion.
You objecting?
No, the motion.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead, Counselor Cook.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to analyze the existing transportation system plan for its ability to protect access to the Croizen Creek Trail, given the new conditions that may arise with future development, and identify potential traffic mitigation measures that may be offered as needed to improve pedestrian and bicycle safety in the area.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Counselor?
Yes, I think that it's really important that we protect the trail at this point. I know it's not part of this development, but it's alongside, and it shares the same name, and I think that this could cause some confusion among neighbors, so I wanted to make sure we address this tonight.
Okay. Further discussion? All? Counselor Anderson.
So as I understand it, I just want to make sure I understand, that all you're asking is the staff to come back with some sort of a report that we can look at. Okay, I'm all for that.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. And then I'm asking for unanimous consent to go back to council manager comment. Okay? I forgot to mention something. I know, I know. Salem Speaks Up is Sunday, December 10th, at St. Mark's Lutheran Church. This is our 25th annual Salem Speaks Up. I hope counselors can attend. This year's theme is safety, and this is an outstanding program. I hope, I've gone to this now for the past 10, 11 years, and it is always good, it's a chance for residents to share their concerns, and this year, it's focusing on safety, but you also hear a lot of other issues come up involving, particularly involving human rights, personal feelings of personal comfort in the community, issues that are outstanding in the community. I just recommend you attend. Again, Sunday, 7 o'clock, St. Mark's Lutheran Church, 790 Marion Street. Thank you. Now, we will, we have already done special orders of business, information reports. Okay, are we okay to move on, then? Okay, first readings.
Ordinance Bill Number 28-17, an ordinance vacating Frontage Road Northwest and Paradise
Motion is from Lewis.
I move a staff recommendation.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next one, please.
Ordinance Bill Number 27-17, an ordinance relating to adopting the new Northeast Salem Community Association and Lansing Neighborhood Association.
I believe.
NESKA Lansing Neighborhood Plan, a component of the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan, and amending SRC 64-005.
Counselors, who's got this area feels the strongest here? Hoy's not here. Hossick?
Move staff recommendation.
Okay. This will go to public hearing, then.
Right.
On the 11th, is that correct?
Next week.
Next week? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Ordinance Bill Number 25-17, an ordinance relating to general government, assessments and liens, businesses and vocations, health and sanitation, community development standards, utilities, streets, municipal offenses, and vehicles and traffic, amending titles I through IX, creating new provisions, and declaring an emergency.
Counselor McCoy?
Move staff recommendation.
Second. Second by Kaser. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We have no second readings, we don't have.
One more.
We have additional first readings?
Ordinance Bill Number 26-17, an ordinance relating to land use, amending Title X, the Unified Development Code, and declaring an emergency.
Move staff recommendation.
Any discussion? Who seconded that? Kaser. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Now we're done, so meetings adjourned.